The North Adams City Council to order for a regular meeting from May 10th, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Barbo.
Here.
Blackmer.
Here.
Bona.
Here.
Harpen.
Here.
Obasahan.
Here.
Haleskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Nine yeas, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance and remember Joseph Carr, teacher for the North Adams Public School System. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 26, 2022.
Motion, motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Haleskowitz, Counselor Sapienza. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's roll call.
Oh.
Everything's roll call tonight.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yeah.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Haleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson? Wilkinson?
Yes!
Blackmer?
Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries. We now have the hearing of visitors on agenda items. Please approach the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have two minutes on an agenda item and no personal attacks.
My name is Robert Smith. I live at 16th Street and Rock Street. Man of President, councilors, including the two who are not here tonight, and Mayor. This is in reference to ordinance number 12.112. It's the election of a new Assistant City Clerk. Now, Mr. Valiers, I know him for over a year now, and I want to tell you, this young man is very impressive, very intelligent. He's a go-getter. He's a community-minded individual. He's done a lot of good things for the city. So I expect that there will be no nay votes for him, there will be only plus votes. I strongly recommend that he be elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address?
Robert Cardamino, 173 Schuylkill Street. I would like to address 12053. I went through that intersection the other day, and they've changed the way it is. It's four different directions instead of one each way. And I think that's going to make a big difference because one goes, one goes, one goes, and one goes. And I would also like to suggest, seeing as how the current highway is a state, a highway, that you contact the state police and have them monitor the traffic for speeding on occasion. They don't have to do it all the time, but I have never, never seen them on current highway. And I would suggest between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter on the agenda? Hearing done, we will move on to the actual agenda. Council Paper 11,790, An Ordinance to Amend Section 10, entitled Special Regulations of Chapter Z of the Revised Ordinance of the City of North Adams, by inserting a numerical order therein following Section 10-13. This has been, before us again, has been referred to General Government, so I think at this point we need an update from General Government. Is Counselor Wilkinson available to give that update? Counselor?
Are you looking for me to speak now?
Well, yeah, I mean, we could make a motion to continue and then you can talk.
I'm having, I'm having, sorry, I'm doing this remote, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I'm assuming around 11,790, is that correct?
Correct. I guess your mo, the motion could be to continuing it to a date certain when people will be back and able to order it. I think the first meeting in July would work.
Unfortunately, I can't hear you. I'm more than happy to give an updated report of where we're at with this, if that's what you'd like.
I think Counselor Haleskowitz is going to make a motion, and then you can give us an update after we have a second.
Could you speak louder, please?
I can, I don't know if you want me to.
Want me to intercept?
Counselor Wilkinson, so Counselor Haleskowitz is going to make a motion to refer, refer this, to continue it, bringing it back to the first meeting in July. At that point, after his motion, we will have a second, and then you can give us an update.
Okay. Well, I didn't catch all of that. In any event.
I'm going to make a motion to refer to the first meeting in July.
Back to General Government.
Back to General Government, when Counselor Wilkinson comes back from vacation.
Second.
Counselor Haleskowitz, Counselor Bona. Okay, Counselor Wilkinson, please give us your update.
Um, yes. In previous council meeting, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. In the previous council meeting, this was referred back to General Government. So General Government met, and we decided that everybody was pretty much unhappy with some aspect of this ordinance, and as such, we referred it back to Administration. Administration took action, the mayor called a meeting on April 29th, and the attendance at that meeting was the mayor, Phil Moranti representing the Inspection Services, Michael New Valley representing Community Development, Zach Fleury, who originally wrote the original STR, but again, it was supposed to be a working document, not the final product, and myself representing General Government. There was a lively discussion, we were there for about 45 minutes or so. I want to let Counselor Shade know that both of our suggestions were indoctrinated into the discussion. The mayor, in the end, finally decided to give it back to Zach Fleury for his, going to write a new one with everybody's input. Where it goes from there is we will, it will go back to General Government, and we will look at it, decide whether it's appropriate or not, and we will bring it back to council for a full council hearing and possibly a vote if there's no amendments. We are probably looking at a return date at this point, assuming that Zach does what he needs to do, and General Government does what they need to do, and I expect that all to happen. There'll be a return date, the first meeting in July, which I believe is the 12th. And just as a point of order, I think this is a first. This is live from a range of standard room. I don't think we've ever done international Zoom before, so I'm having a ball with it. I hope you can hear me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Haleskowitz.
Before, after General Government meets, before it comes back to full council for a vote, shouldn't it go with a joint meeting with the planning board again, because it does fall under zoning?
I think we'll have to have a planning board meeting, but we don't have to make that motion, I don't think.
Okay.
I think it just automatically goes, but we'll verify that. Make sure we get it on the agenda for the first meeting in July, or the planning board meeting in July. Any more discussion on this? We have a motion and a second to refer back to General Government with a return date of July 12th. This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Haleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 11,790-1, An Ordinance to Amend Section 12, entitled Special Regulations of Chapter Z of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams. A motion to continue with the other paper to general, refer to General Government, continue with a return date of July 12th would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Bona and Counselor Haleskowitz. Is there any discussion on this? This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Haleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer? Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries, thank you. Council Paper 11,986, Communication from Counselor Lamb to Request a Joint Review of the Concept of Artistic Crosswalk Installations by the Traffic Commission and the Public Arts Commission. We basically, at the last meeting, moved to refer this back to the Public Arts Commission, but we didn't give a date certain, so the motion to refer to Public Arts Commission with a return date of June 28th would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Bona and Counselor Haleskowitz, any discussion? Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, the Public Arts Commission, you typically meet on the third Monday of the month, so we have not had a meeting since the last council meeting.
Okay. Well, this give you two meetings then, to get this done. And you can actually schedule another meeting, you don't have to just meet that.
Right.
So...
Do we have a roll call vote?
Did we do the roll call vote? No, we have to do the roll call.
We do have to do the roll call vote.
Okay, sorry, this is a roll call vote.
A Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Haleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,051, Communication from Counselor Shade Requesting City Ordinance, Chapter 14, Section 14.2, Curfew Be Repealed. Do we have an update on this, and do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to postpone this to the, let's do the first, let's do the first meeting in July. Postpone it to the first meeting in July.
Okay. And do we have a second? Counselor Sapienza, Counselor Bona, do you have an update?
The recent update is the fact that I was able to, through the, through the mayor, requested our solicitor to review the ordinance in full, and as of today, the solicitor has not gotten back to us yet, so we're still waiting for a solicitor's opinion on the full ordinance.
And you think you need till July to do that?
I think so.
Okay. Counselor Shade?
I don't think we need the solicitor to make this decision. We're repealing something, and the only real thing we would need the solicitor's opinion for is if we wanted to amend it to change it to something else. I don't think we need a solicitor to help us decide whether or not this should continue to remain as it is or not. So with that, I would vote no on continuing it, and ask that we vote on this tonight.
Okay, the motion is to continue with a second. Any other? Counselor Bona?
Yes. Well, I'm in agreement with Counselor Shade of how, of her opinion on this, of the actual initial motion. However, one of the reasons we forward it to the solicitor is because there are some councilors that aren't fully in the same opinion. And I think if the opinion comes back from the solicitor, that this is not, it's not, I guess, an illegal ordinance to have, then that, boom, solves it right there for everybody, that it is not an ordinance. So right now, we're voting more on the opinion, but if the solicitor says, no, you, this is not an ordinance you should have, then that answers it for everybody, despite what their opinion is. That's just my reason why I did request it to go to the solicitor early on. Once again, I expressed my disappointment of how long it takes to get answers from our solicitor, so, thank you.
We would also have to come back on ordinance paper. The other question, Mayor, do you have any insight into, unlike the time on this, or no?
I would hope by next meeting you would have something.
Counselor Sapienza, would you be willing to amend your motion to a return date of May 28th? I'm sorry, no, not May 28th, May 24th?
May 24th, I, okay, I will amend the motion to postpone this to the second meeting in May.
And if you could schedule a, if you can get an opinion and schedule an appointment, a public safety meeting, that would be helpful.
Yep.
I'll say it his, remember?
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, as we have an amendment, let's all vote on the amendment. Actually, why don't you resend and just redo it?
Okay, I'll resend my original motion and make a new motion to postpone this to the second meeting of May.
Second.
Counselor Sapienza, Counselor Haleskowitz.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Haleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries, thank you. Thank you for expediting this, Counselor Sapienza, and thank you for putting it forward, Counselor Shade. Council Paper 12,053, Communication from Counselor Haleskowitz Requesting a Review of the Traffic Issues in the Area of the Intersection of Hodges Cross Road. Motion to file, and then we can have an update?
Motion to file.
Second.
Actually, we don't need to, I can do it without objection.
Mm-hmm.
File without objection. Mayor, and do you have an update, or does Counselor Haleskowitz have an update?
The update was given last week, when they changed the, the timing of the lights.
So as Mr. Cardamino said, they're going off at different times?
It seems to be working. Counselor Haleskowitz?
Yeah, I was going to say, we're going to file the paper because it was also filed in traffic, but the mayor did strike up the conversation with the state, and they did change the sequence of the lighting, and I believe in the last two weeks, I don't think we've seen an event in front of Walmart, except for that, the one that where they didn't negotiate a turn last night within the parking lot, but I don't think that had anything to do with any lighting issues, but it seems like it is working. I've noticed, I go through there several times a day, and there's not two-way, two ways of traffic coming at each other, so it seems like it's a better, a safer platform.
And we internally will continue to monitor that.
And may I also say one thing, with permission, to address Mr. Cardamino's thing earlier about enforcement. So there was a high rate of graduates in the last graduating class of the state police, and there has been a high volume of state police officers in that area, from there all the way down to the old, the old shopping center, which is currently torn down, where Price Shopper is. So if you go through there during the high light traffic hours in the morning, which I do daily, you will see a high concentration of state police officers.
Thank you. Counselor Bona?
Yep. One thing, though, I think we do still have to watch on, because where we've had some deadly accidents is the southern end of the Walmart parking lot, so that, I don't know if that's going to solve this with the lights, but that is something that, nothing has been changed, so some, but that's where there has also been serious accidents.
Counselor Sapienza?
Yeah, I just want to say, I've been through the intersection a couple of times, and I like the new light pattern, I think it works very well.
Thank you. Okay, next paper, Council Paper 12,012, Communication Submitted by City Clerk Lyon Recommending the Appointment of Josh Valiers to Assistant City Clerk, I'm sorry, Joshua Valiers, to Assistant City Clerk for a Term to Expire May 10th, 2025. A motion to confirm the appointment would be in order?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Counselor Haleskowitz and Counselor Shade, discussion? Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, I want to congratulate Mr. Valiers on the appointment, and I wish him luck in the new job, and he's worked with me a little bit with my campaign this past fall, and he's a very energetic, very intelligent person, and I wish him the best of luck, and I look forward to working with you in this new capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Haleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Nine yeas, motion carries. If Mr. Valiers would like to come up, and Clerk Lyons will swear you in. Let the swearing begin.
Congratulations.
I stand in name.
I, Josh Valiers, do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the United States of America. The United States of America. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the City of North Adams. The City of North Adams. And will support the Constitution. And will support the Constitution. And charters thereof. And charters thereof. And will faithfully and impartially. And will faithfully and impartially. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Incumbent. Incumbent on me. As Assistant City Clerk. As Assistant City Clerk. Of the City of North Adams. Of the City of North Adams. According to the best of my abilities. According to the best of my abilities. Aggravate the rule. Aggravate the rule. And regulations. And regulations. Of the Constitution. Of the Constitution. The laws of the Commonwealth. The laws of the Commonwealth. Of Massachusetts. Of Massachusetts. And the Charter and ordinances. And the Charter and ordinances. Of the City of North Adams. The City of North Adams. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Council Paper 12,0116, Communication Submitted by Counselor Barbo Regarding the Discussion of Council Rule 12, Conduct of Members and Officials. Without Objection, I'll File the Communication, Counselor Barbo.
Yes, I've had a number of constituents reach out, and also people have addressed it here in the council, which is the, basically the conduct of the council, both here in chambers, and social media, and the public, and through email. I believe Counselor Shade was working on some, some sort of resolution to try to deal with that, but I just feel that we need to address this again. It has become pretty prevalent, and I'm hoping that we can come to some resolution in finding a way to communicate with each other that is effective and positive.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shade?
To give an update on that, I have been working on something for that, and I do plan to introduce that probably by the first meeting in June, so, wanted to bring it in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that update.
Can I, can I say something?
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Harpen.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank Counselor Barbo for bringing, for addressing this again. I know this is something that I did bring in last June as well. You know, things get better, they get worse, things get better, they get worse. So, you know, I hope we can find some resolution here, so that we can move forward as a body and do what's best for the citizens of North Adams. So I look forward to Counselor Shade's communication in, in change, and possibly our council rules, and supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Paper 12,117, Mayor's Communication Number 50, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't, do you have something else to add?
I did, I have something to add. I'd really just like to encourage the council, or for us to collectively work as a body, to try to find out some way that we are going to work on conflicts. We do have things that come up in this council, we have sometimes open meeting law complaints, I don't mind opening the elephant in the room, and I feel that we need to be able to address those effectively without backlash and just uncomfortableness that, what is the, what is the protocol right now for addressing these things when they happen? What is the protocol? I don't know. So, I mean, I'm hoping that somebody in this room, that somebody on this council can share that with me.
I think Counselor Shade's, the work that she's doing, I think it's best to be addressed through that, and in committee, Counselor Obasahan?
Yeah, I was, thank you, I was going to also suggest that, I think, I do agree that there has to be some type of, whether it's conflict resolution session with us as councilors, and if that needs to be combined or incorporated into the training that we will be doing. I think that also goes along with, with the, because that is around respect, so we can, I think that should be added into that, incorporated in the training somehow, and I'm happy to work with you, Counselor Shade, in incorporating that if needed into, into the training.
Counselor Shade?
Thank you. I agree, I think that would be a great part of the idea, trainings, to have conflict resolution and conflict management as part of that, and I will bring that to the commission to incorporate into our trainings.
And I also think, the former city clerk mentioned things at her inaugural speech with us, and about treating each other with respect. I also know that we can, should be able to disagree without being disagreeable, just because someone disagrees with you, it's not a personal attack, and I think in some cases, we have to get used to disagreeing without taking it personally, and without it feeling that it's a personal attack, and I know that's hard, and I know that it, I've been on the council since minus two years, since 2008, and we had different levels of councilors and different groups of councilors, and we did what we had to do, and the work got done. And I think that's what we need to focus on, is getting the work done. So, to move on to the next...
I agree, I would say that there are times where there are personal attacks, and they're not taken personally, but they are personal attacks. So I think that, I don't want to overshadow that. I do believe that there are members of the city council that do feel as though they are being personally attacked, for views that they take, or actions that they take for the benefit of their constituents, and I think that needs to be resolved. And I, and I don't want it to be overlooked as something that a counselor is taking personally. It's, they feel as though they're being personally attacked, it needs to be addressed.
Counselor Haleskowitz?
I'm just going to make one comment, this thing goes both ways. We've seen it on the opposite end. Right now, some of us are pointed on the receiving end, but it's on both, both ways. We see it in a chat room that 99% of us are blocked at, so let's move on with a paper and come up with something, but this thing does go, because, does go both ways.
Okay, and we're going to move this on, which has been, Counselor Shade is working on it.
There's also, there's also comments that are made on people's personal pages.
So if it started in me, I say nothing about public record.
Okay, enough. Counselor, Counselor Shade is working on that, and that's where we're going to go from. And again, stating facts is not the same, just because you disagree with what somebody says doesn't mean that it's a personal attack. So we're going to move on from this topic, because we've already made them, we've already got a plan. Council Paper 12,117, Mayor's Communication 57, Recommending the Appointment of James Holmes to Windsor Lake, Windsor Lake Recreation Commission for a Term to Expire, April 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Haleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,118, Mayor's Communication Number 58, recommending the appointment of Mary Scanlon to the Commission on Disabilities for a term to expire December 1, 2024. Motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Sapienza and Counselor Oleskowitz. Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Council Paper 12,119, Mayor's Communication 59, providing notice that the fiscal 2023 budget proposal will be presented at the meeting of June 14, 2022. A motion to refer to the Finance Committee for Review would be in order.
Make a motion to refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
And we'll have a return date of June 14. Counselor Sapienza and Counselor Shade. This is, any discussion? Counselor Bona?
Yep. So, all the meetings are posted on the online calendar. First meeting is this Thursday. All meetings start at 5:30. Hope to keep them to about an hour, hour and a half the most. While it does look like there's a lot of meetings online, there are at least two that are just reserved in case we do need to go over. And if you look at them, you'll see specifically what departments we are covering. I strongly recommend, if all counselors can make them, they should, but especially any of the new counselors, it is a great education going through the budget to see how the different line items, why they are what they are, what the changes may be coming forward. And that is your time. And that, not just to counselors, but also the public, because we hear it all the time, when people think money's being wasted, or not being spent the right place. And this is where you see it. This is where you should ask your questions and bring your concerns. And you'll find out that typically money's not being wasted like people think it is. So, so again, meetings are posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Barbo.
Counselor Bona, I know the last meeting, somebody had suggested, was mentioned that the owl would be used to record. Will it also be live on Facebook during the meeting?
I'll pass that on to the clerk, because.
No, it will not. It will be recorded, but it won't be live. At least, I wasn't planning on it. However, I'm open to doing it.
Is that?
That's up to the counselors to decide.
I don't know that technology or what it takes. I do know the, so if it's easy enough, and we can.
It's certainly fine with me.
We can try to figure it out.
I think people would just enjoy that.
I just wasn't planning on it, but I'm absolutely happy to do so.
Okay.
And I know that, think there's one, so the, I have the city clerk taking the minutes during them. I just figure these are meetings that should be, make sure they're recorded a little more accurate, especially with all the numbers and everything being thrown out. I believe he cannot attend on the 23rd. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, so I'll be figuring what to do with that. But, okay, thanks. Well, we have an assistant city clerk now.
We do.
And he has, he's got 13 days to learn how to use.
There you go. So, all right.
Minus the weekends.
I do have one additional question.
Yep.
This is Counselor Harpen. All right, thanks. So, these are gonna be recorded by the owl, and they are not gonna be presented live, is, is my understanding. If they are not presented live, is there gonna be a point in time that they are posted somewhere on the city's website, or Facebook page, so that people can view them?
I, through the chair, I think we just said we are going to try to make, get them live. And if not, I think getting them on, typically, I don't know how long it takes the city to post them anyway, but how, how, do you know?
Yeah, with, within a couple of days, we can get it to the NBCTC.
Okay, so if they are not going, if we cannot get them live, they'll be up within a couple of days. Otherwise, we are going to be trying our hardest to get them live.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear all that. Thank you.
Isn't the technology with the owl, it's live anyway, because it's broadcast, like even our meetings tonight, they're on.
This is, but that's because I'm.
Okay.
Because he's doing it.
On the city, the city Facebook page.
The plan was to just record it through Zoom, not with no attendees, just so it's there and it can be uploaded. But if we're going to do Facebook, then I think that would suffice, because it'll be viewable on Facebook.
Not everybody has Facebook, so we should send it to the TV station. Okay, so that's what we're gonna do. That's the plan. We'll figure it out. Council Paper 12,120, Mayor's Communication Number 60, providing notice of the 2023 Classification Compensation Plan will be presented at the meeting of May 24, 2022.
Did we do a roll call on?
I'm sorry, did we do it? I don't know.
No.
I got distracted.
So, the motion was to refer to finance with a return of June 14?
Yes.
Okay. Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,120, Mayor's Communication Number 60, providing notice that the 2023 Classification Compensation Plan will be presented at the meeting of May 24, 2022. We are going to refer this to finance. Are we gonna have, Mayor, are we, just for clarification, are we gonna have the CNC plan before the 24th?
The Finance Committee will have it on Thursday.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna review it on Thursday.
I didn't, couldn't, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. So, the motion would be to refer to finance with a return date of May 24, 2022, because this will also need a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Shade and Counselor Sapienza, any discuss, any discussion on the CNC plan? This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Council Paper 12,000, nine yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,121, Mayor's Communication Number 61, recommending the appointment of Ross Favory to the North Adams Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire May 11, 2027. Without objection, I'll file a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Sapienza. This is a rule. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Absolutely.
Blackmer?
Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,122, Mayor's Communication Number 62, recommending the appointment of Stephen Warley to the tree commission to fill the unexpired term of Diane Olson for a term to expire June 10, 2024. Without objection, I'll file a communication. A motion to confirm would be in order.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Counselor Sapienza and Counselor Oleskowitz. This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,123, Mayor's Communication 63, presenting a proclamation in sort of, in support of Mental Health Awareness Month. Without objection, I'll file the communication. Mayor? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to make a proclamation declaring May of 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month, whereas mental health is important to our overall health and affects how we think, feel, act, and relate to others. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, our communities, our schools, our businesses, and our colleagues. Whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, with one in five people experiencing mental health illness during their lifetime. And whereas all Massachusetts residents have experienced the effects of physical distancing, stress, and possibly more serious mental health challenges as a direct result of the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas by working together, we can rise, rise awareness of mental illness, available resources, fight stigma, and provide support to those who are affected. Now, therefore, I, Jennifer A. Maxi, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of North Adams to promote, promote mental health wellness and supportive efforts with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Open forum. Anyone wish to address the council on, in issue of municipal significance? Please give your name and address for the record. Two minutes and no personal attacks.
Again, I'm Robert Smith. 165, 163, I'm sorry, North Street, lovely neighborhood. Come by, sit on the porch with me sometime. Counselors, include the ones who are not at the meeting tonight. I'm very disappointed on one of your constituents, and there are other constituents watching this meeting tonight. And I think not only myself, but other constituents are getting sick and tired of what's going on in council chambers. This isn't part of the city government. We don't have time to waste with personal attacks or accusations against one, one against the other. This council, including the mayor, is part of the government that runs our city. We're interested only in going forward with things that are gonna help all the residents in our city, not personal stuff that goes on from time to time on the council floor. It's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wish to address the council on, in issue of municipal significance? Mr. Cardamino?
Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinsey Street. I would like to suggest that the city clerk timed the speakers at open forum, because Council President Blackmer is prejudiced with some speakers and is lenient with others. And I don't trust her. She also has two rules for fizzing open, fulfilling openings when they occur at the council. And one went to Brian Sapienza, and that was rightly so. But when two other openings were to be filled, some members and her in the council, oh, it's too near election. Let's let the voters decide. Well, these two openings should have went to Roger Urban and myself. And not only is the council president prejudiced, she is also a hypocrite and should step down or resign from the council. And I'm not sure that this is something that you should be proud of.
Apparently missed the part about no personal attacks, but let's go. Any, anyone else wish to address the council on an issue of municipal significance? Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Isaiah Moore, 43 Highland Avenue. I just got a new apartment. Just a, I don't know how I would describe it. I guess a concern or potential thing that we could work on. So, I just graduate, or I'm about to graduate MCLA. And when I registered to vote at MCLA, the college, the, that we, the college address that we use for mailing and everything is 375 Church Street, whereas the voting address is different, depending on which apartment you live in. The problem is that the students on campus move between those places a lot, so it might make, it, it might be easier for the city clerk and the town government, or city government, if we were to just go based off of 375 Church Street, since those students are still on campus. Just something to think about. I, I don't know. There, there's probably some sort of reason that it's been put in the other way. Just, I've helped students get registered to vote, and it was kind of a, one of a, one of those hurdles that we had to go over. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor's update, I think you said we're all set. Committee reports in minutes. Liaison updates. Counselors' updates. Correspondents? We have none. Motion to adjourn would be in order. This does not have to be a roll call vote.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Sapienza, all in favor?
Aye.